Good evening. Welcome to the October 22, 2018 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Ethan Baker lead us with the invocation. So please rise for that and then remain standing and we have a special treat for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we give you thanks for this day and thanks for the blessings you've given each and every one of us. We ask that you continue to bless us this evening through the rest of the night, being with us here in Troy City Hall, helping us at the council table to have a productive and efficient meeting for the citizens of Troy. Please be with those who are in harm or in need of your support this evening. Be mindful of the colder temperatures and those who may not have the warmth and comfort that many of us do have. Please be with them always. Please also give special care and love to those who are in need of help but may not have the strength or the power to ask for your help. Please continue to be with our police and fire, our service members overseas and locally. Please be with us all. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now, we have the pleasure of having Cub Scout Troop 1711 from Sussex Elementary School to please come forward and you're going to lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening. We'll wait till everyone gets up here.
Spread out.
Not close, spread up. There we go. Are you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Perfect job. Cub Scout Troop 1711 from Sussex Elementary. Thank you for coming. First on the agenda are certificates of recognition and special presentations, but before we do that, we're going to have our roll call. This meeting is called to order. The roll call, Ms. Stewart.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
All present. Now we'll do certificates of recognition and special presentations. C1, your Troy Family Days Festival chairperson and festival board president, Al Lindsay, is going to come forward and give us an overview of the 2018 festival, and I think he might have a check also.
I do.
I see Lisa, Lisa's going to join you?
Yes. My name's Al Lindsay and I'm the chairman of Troy Days Festival. With me is Lisa Bika-Grodsky. She's the chairman of our Troy Community Foundation International Day. Lisa serves on our Troy Family Days Board of Directors as well as Troy Global Committee, and she's very much appreciated by our whole Troy Days family. She's a real worker. And just to show our appreciation, Lisa's going to receive an award at the Troy Leadership Dinner as our Outstanding Volunteer of the Year.
Oh, very good.
Thank you. We had a very successful festival this year. The weather cooperated. We had almost 30,000 people attending the festival, about 17,000 in paid attendance, and then we had all the children that were allowed in for free and vendors and all that type of stuff. So I think it was close to 30,000 people. We make the, trying to make the festival for all the families of Troy. We have food from local restaurants and food from food booths representing many ethnic groups. We have fireworks that are sponsored by the city of Troy, and we thank you. We have children's entertainment and a petting zoo, petting farm that's sponsored by Kelly Services. The cost to put on this four-day festival is almost $100,000. It was $99,918. So pretty close to $100,000 to put that festival on. Fifty percent of the proceeds of the festival go directly to the North Woodward Community Foundation, and they disperse it back into the community. The other 50% of the profits went into a rainy day fund that we've established to make sure that Troy Days continues on in the future, in case of inclement weather or something like that happens during the festival weekend. We have what I believe now is enough money to substantiate the whole, the whole festival for one, if we rained out all four days, I believe there's enough money to support the festival. The last three years have been profitable, and we have a total of $55,000 in the rainy day fund, which along with all the other corporate sponsors and everything that happens prior to the festival, I believe would give us enough money to withstand a four days of rain or the festival being canceled. So that's happened in the last three years, and that's, that's really great. And the weather's cooperated with that, so I just wanted to let you know. As part of our arrangement with the city, we are proud to be here to present the mayor and city council with a check for $10,000 for the use of the Civic Center property. And I'll have you come down in a minute if you don't mind, and then we'll present that check to you. I'd like to thank the city manager, Mark Miller, and his assistants and staff. We also like to thank the DPW director Kurt Bovensype, excuse me, mispronounced, and community relations director Cindy Stewart, and also the Troy Library Director Kathy Russ. They've all been really marvelous over the years, not just this year, but in many years, helping the festival out. And quite frankly, without Kurt, we wouldn't be able to do it. So he's, he's been a real plus. So thank you, Mr. Miller and your entire staff. Thank you. With that, I'm done. I'd just like to present a check to you for $10,000.
I'll come down and get that check.
Unless anybody has any questions. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I'll make a quick comment. I've known Al for many years from his work with Troy Athens Boosters, and Al's a great guy, and we appreciate your work with the, with the festival. It's been great.
Pull it out of the envelope. There you are, sir.
Thank you, Al.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for all you do.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
I'm bringing this tray over.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mr.
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 I just want to echo what Councilman Pennington said. Al Lindsay is a very modest man, but he's been in charge of this festival for many years, and once he became the lead, it has grown and grown and grown, and it's just nice to see that the festival's back where it should be. So thanks to Al and Lisa, and of course, the city staff.
That concludes the certificates of recognition and special presentations. There are no carryover items this evening, so we will move to public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. E1 is the preliminary site plan review and special use approval, file number SPJPLN 2017-0026, which is the proposed midtown crossing cluster west side of Rochester, north of Long Lake, between Creston and Trinway, Section 10, currently zoned R1C District. I see Kurt, or Brent Sauvignon is here, our planning director, to introduce this. And let me open this public hearing. Good evening, Brent.
Good evening, Mayor Slater. Thank you for the introduction and good evening, City Council. This is a simple project in terms of scale and size, but it's a little complicated, and I'll get into it in, in the PowerPoint presentation. I tried to come up with the best way to tell the story, so that's what I'm going to do is I'm going to tell a story, kind of a chronological narrative. So I'll direct you to the screen, and it starts, since it's a story, once upon a time, long, long ago, going all the way back to 2005. In 2005, we had an application submitted, it's outlined and read there, but it's pretty bright here, to rezone that, the subject parcel, it was 2.74 acres, and there was a proposal to rezone it from R1C, which is one-family detached residential, to R1T, which is an attached product. And the rezoning was recommended for approval by Planning Commission, recommended for approval from staff, but it went to City Council and it was denied. So, which brings us to 2006, where we were sued by the owner, and through the litigation process and the negotiation process, City Council approved a consent judgment, which permitted 12 attached units plus retention of the existing home, which is, as you indicated, Mayor Slater, which is on the west side of Rochester between Creston and Trinway, just north of Long Lake Road. So there's the existing home, and there was a road, to be a road that comes in here with, with a total of 12 additional attached units, and that was to be in a three, a three-unit, a four-unit, and a five-unit building. Nothing happened on the site for nine years. Brings us to 2015. MJC Homes submitted and was granted preliminary site plan approval for the site plan you see on the screen, which is very consistent with the approved consent judgment. But they did not construct. Brings us to 2017. The, the site in blue is the site that I've been talking about. The, MJC Homes acquired the property to the south, which is 1.45 acres in area, so the total site now is 4.19 acres, and they submitted a preliminary site plan application for a cluster development. So that gives you a history and explains why there's some moving parts here, and now I'm going to summarize the, the midtown crossing cluster project. As you all know, the first step in submitting a cluster application is submitting a parallel plan to determine what your base unit number, number of lots or units is. In this case, it's the magic number is nine. So what they also, in the parallel plan, which they are able to do, they kept the home, but whether they kept it or demolished it, they came up with a magic number of nine units. Going off, going off the nine units, they picked up an additional five units through preservation of open space as well as proposing units 1,500 square feet or less. So what they proposed is a total of 14 units in seven two-family attached buildings. The existing home, which used to be, which was proposed to be, was here, is to be demolished. They propose a private road, 38% open space, and eight guest parking spaces. Here's the landscape plan. Again, significant open space retention of 38%. They propose a total of 45 shade trees, 73 evergreen trees, and 93 shrubs. There are going to be a lot of plants on this site. Provide two different options. What you see here is the front elevation of the one-story option. Each, each of the units is proposed to have a two-car garage, they're to be attached, and they're designed in such a way, even though they have front-loaded garages, the, there are architectural elements that draw the attention away from the garage. These are the floor plans. To the left are two units attached, it shows how the, the relationship, and to the right is one standalone unit zoomed in so you can see the details. The one-story options are 1,485 square feet, and they have a first-floor master suite. These are the two-story elevations. Note the addition of dormers here. This, this will add visual interest to the elevations, and to the left you see the modified first-floor plan and the second-floor option, which is the addition of a, of an additional bedroom and a loft area there, about 300 square feet, so it'll kick up the, the square footage to about, about 1,800 square feet. So this table summarizes the difference between the parallel plan, the consent, the approved consent judgment, and the cluster option. Note the density. The parallel plan is a density of a little over two units per acre. The consent judgment was almost five units per acre, and because they added 1.45 acres, but only one unit, that brings the overall density down to 3.34 units per acre. The open space is quite telling as well. The parallel plan preserved about 10%. The consent judgment doubled that to 21%, and the cluster option almost doubles that to 38%. The trees, the consent judgment proposed 40 trees, 58 shrubs. The parallel plan required 61 trees, and the cluster option doubles the parallel plan. They provide 132 trees as well as 93 shrubs. I think it gives a pretty good snapshot of what you're looking at here, and the benefits that the cluster provides. The site is designated in the, in the master plan as, classified as Rochester Road, and it does support condominiums along the frontages, along Rochester Road, between the nodes. There are a number of special use standards. I'm not going to read them all, but they include compatibility with adjacent uses and compatibility with the master plan. They also look at, you're also to look at, as well as the Planning Commission, the nature and character of the development and these other, these other elements. You've seen these a number of times. These are the standards for cluster project approval in Section 10.04. I'm not going to read these, but these were applied to the, to the application. So to summarize this, the request, as I indicated, complies with the master plan, complies with special use standards, as well as the cluster development standards. The cluster development provides a desired housing type of units with first-floor master bedrooms. It adds 1.45 acres, but only one additional unit, provides 38% open space, preserves 70 inches of protected trees, and adds a whole bunch more, and provides eight additional guest parking spaces. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item, September 25, 2018, recommended approval seven to zero, and city management recommends approval of the special use, the open space preservation agreement, the amendment of the consent judgment, and recommends approval of the preliminary site plan with one condition, and that's that the builders utilize LP smart side siding. This was voluntarily offered to the Planning Commission at a past meeting. And I can now answer any questions, and I would like to add one thing. Our phone is ringing off the hook for this application, in a good way. Jackie, the administrative assistant, has received well over a dozen phone calls from residents who are very excited with this first-floor master, master bedroom option, and people are very excited to see this project. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brent. Questions from council? Councilman Hamilton?
Thanks, Brent. This is a great presentation. My only question is, it's a condo and they, it'll remain a private road, correct?
That's correct.
And the condo has to maintain the road?
That's correct. It will, it will have to be built to city standards, but we'll be, the responsibility of the condominium association to maintain.
Great. Thank you.
Councilman Pennington?
I want to piggyback on what you said, Brent. This is the type of development that we've been looking to bring to Troy, and we've been asking, people have been asking us about for years, so I want to commend the builder for bringing us such a project. And it looks, I mean, looks of them too. They, they're, they're nice-looking.
And a representative of MJC Homes is sitting over here to my right.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brent? Councilman Henderson?
Just one comment, and that's on the cluster ordinance. And one of the reasons that we developed the cluster ordinance was for preservation. And yes, you get bonuses for a little bit more density, but you know, the fact, it's pretty glaring when you look at the one slide, you know, how much more green space they're saving, how many more trees they're saving. That's what the cluster ordinance is. So you know, I frequently get, you know, questions about what are you guys thinking with this cluster ordinance? Cluster ordinance is a good thing. It's not a bad thing. So I just want to pound that, that point home.
Any other questions? Mayor Protem Abraham?
Just to expound on what Councilman Henderson said a little further, this is what, our fifth cluster development, I think, at this point, and I think this development truly realizes what we were hoping to get with the cluster ordinance. It is a smaller footprint home. I think this is probably the, the smallest footprint that we've seen, and it's exactly what we were looking for. It's, it's intended for the empty nesters that don't want a huge house but want to maintain their neighbors, be close to the doctors that they've been going to for years and years and years, be near their kids. It's exactly what we were looking for. In terms of the landscaping and the tree preservation and, and really making sure that the open space isn't just open, that it looks beautiful as well, it's clear that there was a lot of time and thought put into, into this development, and it's, it's very much representative of what we're hoping to get, and I hope other cluster projects coming forward look a lot like this one.
Thank you. Any comments? Thank you, Brent. I think we all are happy that this project got delayed till 2017 after the cluster ordinance was, was put into place, so. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in this, on the item this evening? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing, return it to the table for resolution. Councilman Pennington?
I'd like to move E1, Preliminary Site Plan Review and Special Use Approval, file number SPJPLN 2017-0026, proposed midtown crossing cluster west side of Rochester, north of Long Lake, between Creston and Trinway, Section 10, currently zoned R1C, one-family residential district, as printed.
Support. By Councilman Pennington, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve E1, the Preliminary Site Plan Review and Special Use Approval, as read into the record by Councilman Pennington. Any further questions or comments? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you to staff and the builder for bringing this project to the city. Next on the agenda is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I don't see that anyone has signed up this evening, so there is no need for a response by city council or city administration. There are no postponed items, so we will move to regular business. I1, board and committee appointments, there are none this evening. I2, board and committee nominations. I have two nominations that I would like to place in the record this evening. First is the Downtown Development Authority, known as the DDA. I would like to nominate Ward Randall, Ernest Reske, and Douglas Schroeder to remain on the DDA board for the term to expire 9/30/2022. Support. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Pennington, that we nominate Ward Randall, Ernie Reske, Douglas Schroeder to the DDA board for the terms that expire 9/30/2022. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, I would like to nominate to the Global Troy Advisory Committee, Ani Fakori, Saeda Mohiden, for the terms that expire 10/30/2021.
Awkward pause, sorry.
It's all right. I think everyone was waiting to see if I nominated Samir Bagri. I haven't been told yet for sure that there's a request for reappointment, that's why I'm not doing that this evening. So moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Baker, that we nominate Ani Fakori, Saeda Mohiden to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the terms that expire 10/30/2021. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. That is all of the nominations that I have this evening, so I would defer to Mayor Protem Abraham for city council nominations.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nominations for two boards. The first is for the Animal Control Appeal Board, and I would like to reappoint Patrick Flock and Al Petrulis for the terms expiring September 30, 2021.
Support. By Mayor Protem Abraham and supported by Councilman Henderson, that we nominate to the Animal Control Committee, those names that were brought forward by Mayor Protem Abraham. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then for the Parks and Recreation Board, I'd like to nominate, and I'm going to apologize in advance for mispronouncing, Adam Ofczarzak, for the term ending September 30, 2019.
Support. By Mayor Protem Abraham, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we nominate Adam Ofczarzak?
Ofczarzak.
Okay. Close enough.
Both of us.
It was close.
Close enough.
To the Parks and Recreation Board for the term that expires 2019. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion passes. Is that it? Thank you to those that have volunteered to serve. There is no request for closed session this evening, so we will move to I4, which is the confirmation of appointment of Frank Nastasi to Chief of Police, with an introduction by Mark Miller, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. It's sad to say, effective November 1, Police Chief Gary Mayer is retiring. It's sad to see him move on to his next phase, but everyone's allowed to retire at some time. So we have followed the Act 78 process, and Frank Nastasi has been certified eligible by the Act 78 Board, and according to the city charter, the city manager has the ability to appoint the police chief, which I have appointed, Frank Nastasi, and you then, being city council, have the ability to, to, try and get the correct terminology. You confirm the appointment, and we have made an, an offer to Mr. Nastasi, and he has accepted it.
Thank you. Questions by council?
Mayor, one other thing. I apologize, I had mentioned this earlier, that Mr. Nastasi is on vacation, and it's not his fault that he's not here this evening.
I was, I was wondering, I was looking out there and...
I apologize, I didn't mention that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miller? Someone like to move the resolution? Councilman Baker?
I'd like to move I4, Confirmation of Appointment of Frank Nastasi to Chief of Police as printed. Support.
By Councilman Baker, supported by Councilman Hamilton, that we approve I4, which is the confirmation of appointment of Frank Nastasi to Chief of Police, as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Councilwoman Hoderick?
Very excited about this appointment, but very sad to see the chief leaving us. You have served us with great dignity, a sense of...
You have served us with great dignity, a sense of humor, and great care for the entire community, and we really appreciate that. And for those who don't know, Frank Nastasi, he will step into those shoes, I think, with great professionalism. He loves people, he loves this community. I've watched him interact with people. He's the type of police chief that communities look for, and, you know, it's a bittersweet appointment tonight. Really sad to see Chief Mayer go, and appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
I'll echo that as well. I wish Frank was here so we could congratulate him personally, but chief, outgoing chief, I think one of my first things I had done on council is spend a day with you, going through everything, all of our assets, and getting a firsthand view of what the Police Department really does here in Troy. I appreciate that. You've always been open and honest and caring in terms of anything that's ever come up in front of us, and we appreciate your service to the city of Troy. Thank you.
Councilman Baker?
Love fest for Chief Mayer, I guess, apparently, tonight. But, you know, obviously, the two before me have said very true things, and, you know, I just wanted to say, you know, the chief has overseen a department that's been faced with new challenges with active shooter training, and so much, as that's coming to the focus in the country, I think you and your team have done a great job training people and working hard to keep our citizens safe in the city, so thank you for that. I also have to say, you know, you have overseen Officer Julian and Sergeant Lehman, they do such a great job in the community. They came and spoke at my Homeowners Association meeting last week, but, you know, you coordinated that, thank you for that. They do a great job communicating with the city and the social media that Sergeant Lehman does, and the work that Officer Julian does in the schools, I think, is commendable, and I know that. You have to play some sort of role in that, so thank you for that. Chief, you will be missed, but we look forward to having Frank Nastasi come in, and he's a great guy, too, so we're very fortunate.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
I've said to the chief, for at least the past year, that I was in denial that he was going to retire, and I know in the past few weeks you've been doing a lot of lasts, or in the past few months, last budget cycle. Probably your last staff meeting is coming up pretty soon, and with all those lasts starting to pile up, it's getting harder for me to deny that you're going to retire pretty soon. I wanted to take a moment to thank you for serving the community so well. I remember not too long ago, when I would attend city council meetings, not sitting up here, but back there, I always chose a seat near where you were sitting because I felt that much more safe, given the mood in the council chamber sometimes. You have made and kept this community safe, the safest city in Michigan, for over a decade. That doesn't happen by accident. I know you're a modest man and would say, well, you know, I learned that from Chief Kraft and the chiefs before him, but I think you need to give yourself a little credit. Mike Nastasi has big shoes to fill, but I'm confident he is going to excel because he had you as a mentor, and I'm so pleased that we will be able to appoint him tonight. He will do great work. Officer Donut, I thought, might be a contender for your seat, but since we can't have the feline police unit be empty of its only officer, Frank Nastasi is a very fine replacement, if there can ever be a replacement for you.
Thank you. Councilman Hamilton?
Yeah, just the same sentiment, just part of why I admire Chief Mayer so much is how he led our city through tough times in the last 10 years, and the process you went through to find a new chief and to make sure that goes smoothly is very admirable, and I think Frank Nastasi will be a great successor, and thank you for everything you've done for our city.
Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
I'd rather go second to last. I've only known Gary for six years, the six years I've been on council, but I've known many police officers. Police officers like to, you know, drive Corvettes a lot, I don't know why. Al Schenk always had a Corvette. Ron Schneider always had a sports car, and he had Corvettes in different projects that we work on at the shop. Many of the Troy police officers, you know, had Corvettes, and we got, you know, that's how we, our forte was fixing Corvettes, not just, you know, your regular family car that gets smashed up, but when you fix Corvettes, they know you can fix anything, and so we've, so other police officers from other cities come to us, and they, because they know we fix Corvettes. They are all jealous of working at the city of Troy. They know that we are equipped the best, we are trained the best, and we are led by the best. And that, you know, that epitomizes Gary's leadership. Gary's a car guy, I'm a car guy, so we have become friends. We've gone to the auto show together, and we've had, you know, had a lot of laughs. So I'm going to miss you, Gary, I appreciate your friendship. Troy's had a lot of tough times, and, you know, I've sat down with Gary and talked a few times, and I appreciate that also, so, like I said, you will be missed.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to go on record, I've never had a, I've worked in the Police Department, I've never had a Corvette.
Because you're undercover.
I had an opportunity to work many years with Chief Mayer, and I got a call a couple days ago by Terry O'Parka with the Troy Times and asked me to say a few words and quote, so you can read my comments in the Troy Times this Thursday. So, but I wish you the best, Gary. Congratulations, well deserved. And also congratulations to Frank Nastasi. I had the opportunity to work with Frank also for some years, and I'm sure Frank will do a great job, and congratulations to Frank also. The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations again. Next is the consent agenda. Anyone wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Baker?
I'd like to pull J7, please.
J7. Councilwoman Hoderick?
I'd like to pull J6.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
I'd like to pull J5.
Oh, I was going to pull that.
You can have it.
That's all right. Any other? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda with the exception of J5, 6, and 7.
Support. Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve all items on the consent agenda except J5, 6, and 7, which will be considered after the consent agenda vote. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Let's start with J5. Council, or Mayor Protem Abraham?
I pull this item, dates for public engagement meeting in regards to the City Manager search for a few reasons. One is, there's a few items I think this council needs to sort through, one of which is, you know, do we need to call a special meeting at 5:30 to make sure that we are not in violation of the Open Meetings Act, in addition to calling, I think, the special meeting for 7 o'clock so that we can do the interviews, and then waiving the rules of procedure on whether or not we want these meetings live broadcast or not, so. Personally speaking, for myself, for the first part of the suggested resolution, we're calling a meeting at 5:30, which is intended to be for the purpose of public engagement, for which many of us on council would also be attending, I'm a little concerned that there wouldn't be enough time for the public engagement session. I think right now, when you look at the memo, the suggestion is that it would run from 5:30 PM to 6 PM, and then there would be a break between 6 and 7. It seems like if members of the public want to meet the finalists, however many they may be, there may not be sufficient time once you get through the first few minutes where each candidate is introducing themselves, it might not leave a lot of time for people to have one-on-one interactions. So that was part of the reason why I pulled J5.
Any other comments from council before we ask City Attorney Bloom to, Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, maybe a half hour is a little bit short for three people to meet, however many people might show up, we don't know that, but I know that the motivation behind not broadcasting live is so that we don't have applicants watching what questions are, exactly. So, I mean, we did that in the last time, so I understand why we do it that way, and I don't have any problem with that whatsoever. I don't want to give anybody an advantage in the interview process.
Thank you. Any other comments from council on this item? I had the same concern that Mayor Protem Abraham regarding the half hour, but perhaps, City Attorney Bloom, you could give us some insight as to why that was picked and why there's an hour break. I understand there's going to be an opportunity for citizens or employees to indicate comments on a five-by, three-by-five card that can then be given to city council to review before 7 o'clock. I think, was that the intent, City Attorney Bloom?
Well, the resolutions that are proposed for your consideration are three in number, and the first one is just to call the first meeting, the public engagement, at 5:30. The second one is to start the interviews, so by calling a second meeting at 7 PM. So you have an hour and a half there, so there is quite a bit of wiggle room for you. If, you know, again, you can amend that if you'd like, if you want to start the public engagement at 5 PM, that's perfectly fine, you can amend it. If you wanted to start the interviews at 7:30, that's another option that you would have. It is true, Mayor, that we are intending to have some cards there and to be able to allow people to provide feedback. Also, it would indicate that the resumes are listed on the city's webpage, and persons can provide feedback at the earliest opportunity. They can provide feedback at this point in time, if, just based on the resumes alone. So we would encourage people to do that as well. So, again, this is your schedule, and whatever works. I would also just indicate that this is just for the finalists, and so you're going to have a maximum of three finalists. So this is a little bit different than in the past years where we've had two hours, but it was for all of the candidates. So, and just to address the other issue as well, the waiver of the rules of procedure, that's actually for the protection of the candidates, as well as to provide for a process that is as open as possible. Again, there is an opportunity for the members of the public to be in attendance because it is an open meeting in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you have.
Thank you. So it's not the intent to go from 5:30 to 6, it's to go from 5:30 to close to 7 PM with the interaction?
It allows for you to do that, yes. Those are the firm dates, the five, or the firm times, the 5:30 and the 7 PM, and again, you can amend those if that works for you.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. So, City Attorney Bloom, you had made reference to the three-by-five cards where members of the public could put their feedback or at the earlier employee engagement session. At what point does council get a copy of those three-by-five cards?
Our consultants will be tallying the information and providing it to you, so you will have it before you actually have to vote on anything. So before you will have to make your decision, you'll have that, you'll have it at the earliest opportunity. I'm just not sure how much public comment there will be, so at the earliest opportunity.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this, Councilman Henderson?
Maybe just to suggest, if everybody is in agreement, why don't we move the public engagement session to 5 o'clock and the interviews to 7:30? I would rather have more time than get to the end of an hour and think, oh crap, I wish I had more, sorry, didn't mean to say that word. I wish I had more time to-
Okay, you can use that word.
Yeah, you've established, Troy. So, but I would rather not run out of time and have the opportunity for all of us to get to know somebody in a social, or the public as well. There may be a lot of people here under the circumstances.
I don't have any problem moving it up, but I think if we start moving the interview times back, you're talking from 7 to 10 for interviews, and if you keep moving that back, we're going to get to, and then we have to make a decision after that, so you're, I don't have any problem moving it up to 5, but I would prefer to stay at 7 for the interviews, myself. And you're right, we don't know if two people are going to show up or 50, so I think I'd feel more comfortable at 5 o'clock, myself. So I'll, it's your, you okay? I'll propose to amend Resolution A with a start time of 5 PM as opposed to 5:30 PM, and keeping B and C as B and C. Support. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Hamilton, that we move the starting time to 5 PM for Resolution A and J5, and leaving B and C as printed. Any further discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. J6, Councilwoman Hoderick?
Thank you, Mayor. Just continuing some administrivia here, thanks for the patience of everyone attending. We're looking at our calendar for next year and establishing the meeting dates, and I'd like to propose for February that we, our meeting dates be February 11th and 25th instead of the February 4th and 18th as proposed.
Support. Moved by Councilwoman Hoderick and supported by Councilman Baker, that we amend J5 to read, or J6, I'm sorry. Resolve that Detroit City Council shall hold regular meetings in 2019 according to the following schedule, as printed, except for February, which will be changed from February 11th and February 25th. I don't have any issue with that. The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes, motion passes. J7, Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. This is in relation to amending the Community Partnership Agreement between Smart and the city of Troy for the Big Beaver Shuttle buses. I recognize the terms of this, call for a $0. It's not about the cost. It's not any money, additional money at this point, but I'm a little concerned about this from the standpoint of, I understand we've been negotiating and speaking with Smart about this for a long time, in fact, I think, believe since our study session of September of last year. But two months ago, I came to the meeting and spoke a little bit about my concerns that we don't have a plan for measuring the success of the Big Beaver Shuttle, the Troy Trolley, as it's colloquially called. And I guess I'm having a hard time proving something that- And I guess I'm having a hard time approving something that says, you know, move forward with these buses, but we still, two months later, haven't talked about what our plans are for measuring the success. And I'm a firm believer that, you know, if you can't measure something, you can't manage something, and I don't know what the plan is at this point. I understand we are in the middle of a city manager search, so I don't think that -- I'm not putting the blame on anybody in city management. I understand that we're in interesting times. I just feel as council, we have a responsibility to continue to have this conversation, and by doing this, we're sending a clear message that we're just moving forward without having any further discussion on it. So, I don't feel comfortable approving this as it is, as of right now, without understanding what it is we're still trying to achieve with the shuttle. And as luck would have it, we have a report tonight that shows the third quarter update where there's been a decrease in overall ridership. I suspect some will say, well, that's because it's the summer, you have more riders in the summer, and I can understand that. But my concern with that is if that was supposed to be our highest, or decreasing, we never got to a very high number in the summer months, so I'm not sure where we're going. I'd like to see us come up with a plan and have another good discussion about it, because I think the community has the same concerns that I do. They may not be as vocal as I am in a meeting, but I hear a lot about it. So, I'm not comfortable passing this, approving this as of now. I know that there are good thoughts and good opinions about this issue, and we've had good discussions in the past, but I think we strongly need to have another one at this point. Thank you.
Any other comments on J-7? Councilman Hamilton?
I share some of your concerns, but I want to keep this going, so I'll support this. But I do think we need a better long-term plan, so I'm with you, but might as well keep it going if it's going, so I'll vote for this.
Any other comments on J-7? I don't disagree with what you're saying, but it would be nice, maybe if you could come back and propose what you think might be a process, if you could, maybe in a future meeting. Councilman Baker?
I'm happy to, Mayor. Two months ago, you had mentioned that you had some notes and some thoughts, and you were going to get with city management, so I was wondering if that was going to be forthcoming. But I have my own thoughts and plans, I'm happy to bring something forward. Thank you.
Sounds good. I'll move J-7 as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilman Henderson that we approve J-7, the amendam to the community partnership agreement between Smart and the City of Troy as printed in the agenda packet. Any further discussion? The vote, Ms. Stewart?
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you are here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next on the agenda, K-1A is an announcement for a public hearing on November 12, 2018. It is the adoption of Brownfield redevelopment plan number 10 for Harrison Poolside Troy Development Parcels 20-29-326-018 and 20-29-326-017 off of Stutz Drive. Next is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I'll call upon Marsha Bozenberger, Troy resident who wishes to speak this evening. Good evening.
Good evening. Chief Mayor, the few times I've spoke to you, I very much appreciated all the work you did for our neighborhood, so I wanted to say thank you and best wishes. Just something really quick. The improved -- I take lots of walks down Square Lake, and it always has concerned me that both sides of Square Lake, on the north and south sides of the incomplete sidewalks, especially since we have two schools right on there, Smith Middle School and Martell. A lot of kids walk, a lot of kids ride, there's half-days of school, you know, they bring their skateboard, and then they run out of their sidewalk. And then on the other, the south side of Square Lake, there's this patch of blacktop that is -- it's a disaster if you even try to do a skateboard over it. But also, that's such a narrow portion, and it's right up against the curb, that really could use a guardrail in front of that. I don't know if you've ever taken that strip down or been in that area, but I don't know who we would talk. It's in front of Buildings 54 and 46 East Square Lake. I'm not sure who I'd take that to, if I say that in front of you guys, or I take it to planning or zoning. And then, just to touch base, it's really funny, I didn't realize the shuttle was going to come up, but I'm all about fun, and I think it would be awesome to see Big Beaver look into the scooters that Detroit is having. I could see, you know, we want to be a walking community, but that is such a huge stretch, and it's such a busy stretch, that if I was working along Big Beaver, I'd hop on a scooter to go down to Shake Shack and back. I mean, who doesn't need to? And I think having a scooter gives you your own freedom, and you don't have to sit there and wait, and a shuttle could be late. But, you know, on top of the shuttle, maybe add some scooters. I'm all for fun.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up to speak on public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. It's an opportunity for City Council or city administration to respond to the public I'll defer, City Manager Miller, could someone get with Ms. Bozenberger to discuss the process that she discussed with the sidewalks on Square Lake? I walk that quite a bit, and you have to walk on one side and then cross over and then walk, I understand, but I know there's a reason for that.
Yes, we'll take a look at it, and we have your contact information.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoderick?
Appreciate the comments about scooters, and I think what we're having a discussion about is mobility in the city, where we walk, where we can ride bikes, where we might take shuttles. Councilman Baker rightfully keeps asking the right questions about how do we know when we'll be successful? And the shuttles in the agreement here furthering that. I'm hearing him, but want to experiment with when we have proper vehicles that are properly wrapped and labeled, might there be a difference? So, I'm wanting to give that more time. Your scooter thought, I just got back from the DC area, and people are using them everywhere to get around, and mobility is a huge piece of that city. It's fascinating to watch it in Detroit and the, you know, how we're pulling in biking and scooters. I think it's a worthwhile idea that will now be the seed planted in our minds, and as we watch Big Beaver and look at what our -- where we can get creative with mobility, that's certainly something I'll keep in mind, and I appreciate you bringing it forward. Think we can watch and see what happens a little bit more in Detroit and get some learnings, and it may be something that we can bring here as well. So, thank you for -- I think thinking creatively is valuable. Also, wanting to test it and make sure we understand how to, if we're being successful, it's the right, this is the right dialogue, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll echo that. I was at a luncheon in Detroit with Mayor Duggan and some other mayors last week, and he was talking to me about the scooters, and he, the idea, he went to California and saw that Californians using the scooters, and he brought that idea back, and he said it's the best thing they've ever done. And if you've been down there, they're just about on every corner, you know, just pick it up and use it. But I'm with Councilwoman Hoderick, any good idea to move across Troy, you know, that's always what we're looking to do. And stay tuned, I was at the DDA meeting last week where there was the discussion on what's happening with I-75 in Troy, and what's happening with this intersection right here at Big Beaver. There will be a presentation to the city soon about the intersection, and it's very interesting what they're going to do with Big Beaver. And being able to move around Troy is going to be even more important. The actual sidewalks are going to go right straight down the middle of Big Beaver, under I-75. So, it's going to be a couple of years, but I think it's kind of exciting what they're doing. And I won't go any further, but it's really, really --
Spoiler alert.
Pardon me?
Spoiler alert.
Yeah, it's really, it's really interesting what they're going to do with Big Beaver. All the more reason, I think, to keep the ideas of finding ways to move across Big Beaver. So, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick?
That was an observation, in that DC area, a lot of the way moving is not on the sidewalks on either side of the roads necessarily, but down the middle. And at first, it throws you, and then you realize the efficiency of it. So, if people are engaged in this conversation and wondering, and sometimes a new idea can cause somebody to step back and say, no, 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 we can't make that change, I would encourage Google, take a look at what cities are doing, and let it play in your mind a bit, because we have a lot of room for opportunity here on Big Beaver to move people and to move people more safely. And a lot of cities are doing it very creatively, so I'm looking forward to that presentation. Thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate it.
It's going to be pretty cool, really is. I don't know, Mr. Miller, I think they're coming pretty soon. M.Dot's coming to the City Council for that same presentation, I believe, is that correct?
I believe we're targeting February.
Oh, February?
Just to advise, this is a real moving target, it's all being developed in real time.
Okay.
And the longer we wait, the more information we'll get, which will be a good thing.
Okay, thank you. There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Any comments from council this evening? Councilman Baker?
Just a reminder that this Sunday is the Third Annual Frightful 5K, starting in the community center parking lot. I'll say it 100 times, if I haven't, I'll say it again, but that didn't make sense, but I know what I meant. It's a lot of fun to run down Big Beaver. If you've never done it, there's no cars, it's beautiful in the morning, probably be cold, the way it's been, but it's worth it when you're running and you'd be on Big Beaver with no traffic, and to experience that is a very unique experience, so I highly recommend doing it. Prices did go up today, I believe, to $35 for registration. If I'm correct, you can register at that price up until the day of the event, and I think if you register in person, it's up to $50. So, if you're going to do it, do it now. Some people will be wearing costumes, some people on council may be wearing costumes, I will not be, but somebody else might be. So, but it's a lot of fun, so please come on and join us.
Thank you.
Can I do it on a scooter?
You probably, never mind.
Any other council comments? Councilman Pennington?
Troy Nature Society is having their annual fundraiser Thursday, November 1st. Is that correct, Cindy? And the, so tickets are on sale if you're a friend of the Nature Society, we will see you there.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoderick?
For those that have been following and interested in the Rochester Road Design Standards, Planning Commission is going to be, I understand that there's an item on the agenda tomorrow night on Planning Commission, if you're wanting to keep paying attention to that, you'll want to be sure to watch or show up to listen to that discussion. That continues to be a priority brought to us, you know, from residents to take a look at that, and I just wanted to affirm that it hasn't gotten lost in the shuffle, and they'll be looking at that tomorrow night.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Next are reports, any comments from council regarding the reports in the agenda packet this evening? Councilwoman Hoderick?
P-5 was a report that I submitted following the attendance of the Michigan Municipal League and Michigan Association of Planning Conference. There were a number of us that attended from the city, Councilman Hamilton, several members from Planning Commission, City Manager Mark Miller, wearing a planning hat and city manager hat, Brent Sevendon was also there from Planning, and it was, you know, when you can, when you think about the notion that we are now in a lifelong learning environment, continuously needing to educate ourselves, this conference was definitely outstanding in that regard. And all of us, we split up between sessions, and we all felt that we had benefited from a ton of learning, and we felt very energetic about it, and came back, and we did meet to debrief so that we didn't lose the learning and discussed about, discussed what we specifically felt we could bring back here to further things here in the City of Troy. And so, the report in there, I was writing it on the fly between a lot of different things, but you have a chance to see my notes from the sessions, and then just a summation of the debrief session that we had. A huge piece that came at us over and over again was engagement, and the importance of engaging residents, residents being involved in planning and helping cities be vital, and we learned over and over again the value of that and saw examples of it. So, encourage our citizens to continue to be involved to the extent that they can be going forward, and we talked about that in our debrief session. There were two very specific items that I wanted to bring up and maybe see if we could have council consensus on, kind of actionable items. One was pertain to the ability, and Michigan Municipal League can help handle this, to look at GIS and look at the city and learn where our revenues are coming from. It provided a visual, a three-dimensional look, very valuable tool that several cities in the state have used to understand their future planning. And I was told that City of Troy is definitely skilled in this regard with GIS. We have our in-house staff, and that with some discussions with MML, they could help guide us in providing such a tool. And I think going into the next budget studies sessions, that could be helpful to all of us. I was pretty charged up about it, and I'm not even a numbers kind of person, so that tells you how valuable, you know, that's not my wheelhouse, and it was really insightful to me. So, City Manager Miller, as I described it, he said, yeah, I'm sure we could kind of take a look at this, but I'm hoping maybe there would be consensus that, you know, we would say, yes, please, look, and maybe bring this tool to our discussion. That was one. The second was ethics is a big discussion, and what a challenge it is. Councilman Hamilton and I both attended a session, and it's a challenge for, it seems like every municipality where elected leaders and whatnot are trying to understand, you can get into a gray area very easily, and training is available. I know staff, City Manager Miller has been bringing it to staff. There is training available for elected leaders, they can even come to the city for us, and I think that would be very valuable, so that we can say to our residents and citizens that we are always revisiting that, understanding what compliance rules are, and working to serve with the greatest integrity that we can. We'd be able to demonstrate that at all levels. So, that was another kind of actionable item that would need, you know, consensus to give to city staff. Aside from that, it just, if I could ask fellow council members to keep that engagement idea in your mind, and working with planning, who are doing an outstanding job, I think of engagement, that is just, was definitely a foundation of the entire conference to bring back, and all of us that attended, when we debriefed, we wanted to make sure that we continued to seize that, and we didn't lose sight of the importance of it. So, those, maybe, you could ask for consensus, I don't know how to best do that.
You can ask for consensus. Not that I'm against any of it, I'm not that familiar with it. I think I'd need a little more time to look into it, and then to ask staff at this point to do it, I would like to wait until we've completed our search and made a final appointment, myself. I would like to wait until we've completed our search and made a final appointment myself, and then revisit it, but not that I'm against it, but if there's consensus, you know. How do you feel? Councilman Pennington?
We should probably wait until we get, you know, a new city manager or decide on a city manager and, you know, let him be part of that process too, I would think, that would probably be a good idea.
Maybe if we could just revisit it.
I'll put it on my to-do list.
On your to-do list?
And bring it back. But just, you know, to sum up, everybody was appreciative of what they learned, and, you know, I'm not doing justice to what we each brought back. It was very valuable. I would encourage looking into, you know, what they have to offer and the continuous learning that it brings. I think we owe it to our residents to make ourselves as current as we can on the techniques for managing cities, for planning, for development, and for representing our residents. And thank you, I'll bring those items back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the report. Any other comments from council regarding the P. Adams report? I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is no closed session this evening, so thank you for coming, we are adjourned.